The Minnehaw County Commission meeting, if you'd stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we should stand, my nation, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome again, and a reminder to silence your cell phones, meeting documents are available for review next to Commissioner Bender. If you need a listening device, Robert right here would be able to help you. With that, we'll go into routine business. I'd like to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the-
One second, sorry. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda to defer item thirteen. Meeting.
I'll second that. I would ask till when?
For two weeks, just give us some time to investigate the matter a little bit more.
Okay. We have a motion to amend the agenda to defer item thirteen to two weeks, which is twenty-eighth. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion to approve the amended agenda has been approved.
Do we need to vote on whether we're going to amend it?
Right, I'm sorry.
So we need to vote first on it?
Ah, gotcha. That's what I was trying to say. No, that's okay.
I knew that.
It's her fault. She confused me. What she said she was gonna do and what she did was different. We have a motion to approve or to amend the agenda first, and that is to move item thirteen to the twenty-eighth of June. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
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 All those against, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Now we're approving the amended agenda as stated.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
To approve meeting minutes, first for the county commission meeting on May thirty-first.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. County Commission special meeting on June tenth.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the June tenth special meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then finally, the county primary election canvassing board on June tenth.
Make a motion, but I have a comment to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to comment that there is a recount going to occur in one race from that primary.
Thank you, Jeff. We have a motion and a second to approve the primary election canvassing board meeting on June tenth. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item number three is bills to be paid of five million, one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ninety-two cents.
Pay the bills.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pay the bills. Any questions, comments, Mr. Barth?
Chairman, today's bills do include a large transfer to the state from our vehicle funds that makes our bills look a lot larger. We also had some significant bills in the highway department of over one and a half million dollars, so, and it has been two weeks since we met, so they're a little larger than normal.
Thank you. Any other comments about the bills? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. We have reports of the Minnehaw County Juvenile Detention Center report for May, and the Minnehaw County Sheriff's report for May also. Those are filed and can be read in the office. Item five is personnel action. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources.
Good morning.
First action I have for you is a request for your approval of the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve routine personnel action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is significant employee anniversaries for June.
We have several employees celebrating anniversaries in June. Celebrating five years of service, we have Joseph Flynn in the state's attorney's office, Catherine Dunn in the public defender's office, Jasmine Thalen in the jail, Ryan Bakeburg in the sheriff's office. Celebrating ten years of service, we have Kevin Nilson in information technology, Tara Palmeato in the state's attorney's office, and celebrating twenty years of service is James Whip with the sheriff's office. So our gratitude goes to those individuals.
Thank you, Carrie. We also have significant volunteers in the county government.
Every month I get up and give you a long list of volunteers. This month, it's two-hundred and seventy. When you consider that we have five hundred and forty-three full-time staff, we're having that staff supplemented by almost fifty percent through volunteers. It's an incredible number.
It is. Very good point. Thank you for your service, and thank you for volunteering. That's a super asset to the county, that's for sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I guess I'd like to just make a small comment that we had some, or have some significant retirements also this week, you know, where we have that man back there. Yes, Kyle Halseth is leaving us. We had Norma Erickson, who had forty-three years in the treasurer's office, leave us, and Mary Yale in the register of deeds, and we also have a new person sitting up front here, Olivia, who will be sitting in for Cindy Jepson, who cannot obviously be replaced, but, so Olivia will be up here taking the notes going forward, and I think all of those need to be recognized.
Thank you, Jeff. It's obvious that they are very valued employees, and the people that are retiring are going to be difficult to replace, and thank you for putting up with us for a long time.
Thank you for coming.
No. You have big shoes to fill.
Oh, I have no doubt she'll be spectacular. Thank you.
Would you like to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about you, as long as Jeff got started?
Sure. My name's Olivia Larson. I worked at Ronald McDonald House prior to this as the administrative assistant, and I have a bachelor's from USD and a master's from USF, so.
Awesome. We're glad to have you here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carrie. Item six is an application for abatement. I believe we can take all four of those at one time, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halseth, still the Director of Equalization till Friday, so.
That's why we're doing them all at one time, to get out quicker.
Thank you, thank you. I guess as a preface to this, these are four of the last owner-occupied problem properties we had. We've dove into this thing as deep as we can get on the computer system to find out why they fell off. The only thing we can blame it on now is the gremlin. We have not found that little guy. One of these days, I hope IT tracks him down. If we could find no reason why these came off the computer system, I'll fall on the sword. Blame me. It'd be easy. The first one is for Jason Bennett, record ID seven nine nine three seven, property tax abatement in the amount of seven hundred and ninety-three dollars, fifteen cents. The second is Brian Wahlberg, record ID five seven nine four two, property tax abatement in the amount of eight hundred and eighty-one dollars, eighty-seven cents. I'm gonna wreck this next one. Dolores Butenshawn, record ID three two 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 six, property tax abatement in the amount of four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents, and Ryan Plucker, record ID two six zero three one, property tax abatement in the amount of four hundred and ninety-one dollars, thirteen cents.
Thank you, Kyle. Is there a motion to approve items A, B, C, and D?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve those items. Any questions for Kyle? I did that the other day, too.
Yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Thank you, Commissioners. Been a pleasure.
You're a wonderful guy to work with, and a tough job to do, but thank you so much for your help. Item seven is the notice and request. We have a notice from the Sioux Falls J.C.'s of their intent to conduct a fundraising raffle, a drawing to be held on July fourth at the W.H. Lyon Fairgrounds. Any comments that you'd like to make?
Travis Arnesson. Eight fourteen West twentieth Street. This is the annual Sioux Falls J.C.'s Fourth of July Celebration. We feel that this event has been paid for once. By our men and women. So it ought to remain a free event. Therefore, we've come up with many ways to fund it. One of them is the raffle. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Travis? I have noticed that you came, the first time I was here, your hair's getting longer and mine shorter. Thank you for your efforts in being here. Any questions? Any a motion? Don't need a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis, for coming.
Thank you very much.
Item B is a notice from the South Dakota Department of Transportation in the city of Sioux Falls about I-229 major investment corridor study, public, open house, and informational meeting. Item C is a notice to the, from the South Dakota Department of Transportation in the city of Sioux Falls on the I-29 and Forty-first Street interchange Louise Reconstruction about a public, open house, and informational meeting. Item eight is planning and zoning notices. There are none. Item nine is a petition for compromise and lien, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson with the commission office. Commission office received a application for a compromise lien for DPNO two eight two seven eight five one in the amount of three thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars and seven cents. This lien is in the name of both the applicant and his ex-wife. The applicant is scheduled to close on the purchase of a home at fifteen fifteen East Austin Street here in Sioux Falls on June seventeenth, this coming Friday. The lien was identified by the title company during the work prior to closing. The applicant requests a compromise and release in full with no payment. During the course work of preparing this lien application, staff also became aware of a second lien that you should note. This is DPNO three one zero four two in the amount of two thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars, forty-seven cents. This lien is solely in the name of the applicant's ex-wife, but more than a thousand dollars, one thousand, ninety dollars and ninety cents, forty-four percent of the lien charges were incurred while the couple was married, and that was from May eighteenth of nineteen ninety-six through December fourth of two thousand and fifteen. This lien was not included on the application, and it appears that the title company had not flagged this and was not aware of it during the work leading up to the closing on this property. What we have done here is tried to break down the original lien, DPNO two seven eight five one, into charges that were incurred prior to the marriage, during the marriage, and after the marriage, just in anticipation that that may be helpful information for you as you deliberate and decide what you may want to do with this. One hundred and eighty-one dollars and sixty cents was incurred by the applicant prior to the marriage. One hundred and ninety-five dollars and twelve cents was incurred by the ex-spouse prior to the marriage. Three thousand, three hundred and three dollars and thirty-five cents was incurred by the applicant and the ex-spouse during the marriage. During that time, there was also small partial payments totaling three hundred and fifty dollars that were received. On your briefing memo, I've also noted an additional charge, three hundred and six dollars incurred by the ex-spouse after marriage. In following up with the auditor's office and reviewing some information that wasn't initially apparent, it appears that that charge, that final charge that was incurred after the marriage, was incurred for a charge involving defense of a juvenile, the child of both the applicant and the ex-spouse. So we would submit that legally, there could be a responsibility of both parents of that final charge. The applicant lists total assets of two thousand, two hundred and ninety-two dollars, including cash, checking account balance, household goods, and it appears a small boat. Liabilities from four different loans totaled eleven thousand, five hundred dollars. Applicant lists total income yearly of thirty-six thousand, four sixty-four, and according to a two thousand and fifteen income tax refund, received a refund of three thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars. I did ask the applicant if he was able to make any payment towards this compromise request, and he indicated that because he is very close to closing on this particular purchase, there will be an amount owed at closing of about five hundred dollars that he is not able to make a payment at this point. With, for your review, we included the application, tax return, lien summary sheets, divorce decree, and several other documents. I believe the applicant is here, may want to speak. Obviously, he or she does not have to if he doesn't want to, but that would be his opportunity, and would, after that, stand by for your questions and look to provide any additional information you may need.
Thank you, Robert. Does anyone have any questions for Robert right now? If not, the applicant can remain where they're at and speak without being acknowledged or use their name, so if you would like to say anything about the compromise of lien, we're certainly able to hear that. Any comments? Okay. Both Cindy and Kirsten have worked hard at trying to get some of these issues straightened out, if you will, and you sure you don't want to read this, or you want me to?
I was just gonna, yeah, just gonna say that one of the things that we've worked on between the three offices is a number of potential resolutions that you may wish to consider, again, depending on how you choose to resolve this lien, but I can go through those just as a basis for your discussion. The first lien, the first lien would, or resolution potentially, would release the charges that were incurred by the ex-spouse prior to the marriage, create a new lien, and place those charges in a new lien solely in the applicant's, in the name of the applicant's ex-spouse.
I think we could do that right now, if we want to clean it up a little bit.
Do you want to use?
I'll make a motion to release the applicant's name from the one ninety-five twelve.
Okay.
And place it on-
That actually is two different files, and I'll give you the file numbers just for the record. It's two one, one one, one three, dated May thirteenth, nineteen ninety-two, for a hundred and seven dollars and sixty-two cents, and file number two one three, two oh three, dated June eighth, nineteen ninety-two, for eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
That's my motion.
Thank you, Dick. Is there a motion and a second to remove those and put them in a separate account, separate file? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Now we'll go to the second piece of that. Robert, if you want to continue?
Yes. The second element of that, again, working with the state's attorney's office and the auditor's office here, that would, looking at that same lien with the amount that now is the responsibility of the applicant and the spouse during the time of the marriage, that would be your discretion if you choose to make a compromise, some partial compromise or compromise in full. And again, that falls back to a question entirely of commission discretion.
Okay. Any questions of Robert?
I would point out the new total of that lien after the action that you just took is three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents to begin with.
Does everybody have that new total for DPN, two seven eight five one, is three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents?
Joe?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to talk about the one eighty-one sixty and the last one, the three oh six with this, because that, which that totals thirty, thirty-one or whatever number Robert put out. There's no question on the first one that he's responsible for that. And on the last one, the, it's their child, and I believe a parent still has obligations for their child, so I would leave that one alone, too, at this point. But anyway, I think when we need to talk, if there's any compromise gonna be given, I think I should be talking about the whole thing.
I think you're very accurate in that comment. Does anyone have any questions of Robert, or of Kirsten, or Cindy, who, again, have worked hard at fixing this one and making it legally correct? No questions? Is there a motion?
Well, I do have questions. I just want to, the services rendered this year, were they to the applicant or the ex-spouse?
Yeah.
The applicant. And those are as recent as May, right?
I think that's correct.
Well, the one in sixteen was for their minor child.
Ah.
Hold on, Robert. The new total after the first action that you took, three thousand, four hundred and forty dollars and ninety-five cents.
Is everybody under, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dick.
Even though I don't necessarily agree with the fifty percent, I would release the applicant's name on payment of seventeen hundred and twenty dollars.
And that's on DPN's two seven eight five one, correct?
And what was that, seven hundred?
One thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Which is one-half of the thirty, four hundred and forty-plus dollars.
Mm-hmm. Does everyone have that?
I would go ahead and second that motion. It just seems like that that's the most consistent with past practices.
Okay.
Can I ask for a clarification on?
Absolutely.
This came off of a compromise application you worked on a couple of weeks ago. Are you intending a compromise and release in full upon payment of, so that it doesn't release until you receive that specified amount?
The balance in the name of the ex-spouse.
It only releases the applicant's name.
After a payment for that specified amount has been received.
Yeah, the balance would be remaining on her account.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Commissioner Barth?
I think this is going to be a burden for the applicant. At the same time, we're representing nearly two hundred thousand people who are owed this amount, and we need the money to assist others going forward. And so, you know, if it was owed to me, I certainly would be questioning releasing it, and I'm representing all those people.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I will call for the question, and I think we should vote by roll call, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Gander?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Gennetta?
Aye. Motion unanimously passes to release DPNO two seven eight five one for a payment of one thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, and the balance to remain on the
And this does not do anything on this newly discovered?
Correct. We still have one piece left.
Somebody will pay attention to now.
Yeah. Robert, do you want to go with?
And that brings us to the final lien that we identified in this process. Again, this is one that is not, was not included in the application. The applicant's name is not on this, but as we were digging into this and reviewing it, a substantial portion of these charges were incurred during the time of the marriage, forty-four percent. And again, it also appears that the title company did not flag this as they were doing their review prior to closing.
Can you explain why his name wasn't on it?
So we just, we felt that we needed to bring this to you for your information and your consideration as you look at the other applicant, application that did come forward.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to take the applicant's name off of this and leave it on the ex-spouse.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion? Motion dies for a lack of a second. Any other proposals?
I guess, I mean, there's no question that if this had been done properly, it would have been recorded in the name of both parties. Is that correct?
They were married at the time these services were incurred, and my, I'll defer the legal question to counsel, but they were, an application that was presented, approved, and services provided during the time of the marriage.
Okay, so then my next question is for legal counsel. What is the effect of that?
Sure. If it's recorded against the one spouse, because there's a duty to support under our law, only the ones that are, the services that are rendered during the course of the marriage, no matter whose name is formally on the recording, there is a duty to support under the law, and in my interpretation of that, at least that forty-four percent or so is doing enforceable against the applicant.
It would seem to me that if an error was made, it had to be made on our side, because we didn't put the name on, but I think this thing rests on its own merits, and if the bank goes ahead, or if the title company doesn't want to amend their issue, I guess that's not our problem. I don't believe we should do anything with this. If it comes back to us, we'll address it at that point.
Is that a motion?
I'm not sure it needs a motion.
Well, we have to either defer it or not address it.
Choose to take no action.
Just as a procedural matter, if no one has a motion or second here, it just, nothing happens with it, so.
Dies.
Yeah.
I'm okay with that.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah. Resolution dies for no action.
Mistress, thank you.
Thank you for all your extra work in straightening that out.
Keep waiting for one of these to be relatively simple. I've not seen that yet.
Waiting.
First. I have to say, they continue to get more complicated rather than going the other way. Now we're at the opportunity for public comment. If anyone has anything that's not listed on the agenda, you have five minutes to make your presentation. Mr. Colby?
Morning. Robert Colby, over the hill and gaining speed. With events that have taken place here in the recent past, it makes one stop and pause, or at least it for me, that sometimes we kind of think we're pretty good, and we get a little complacent. What you see on this T-shirt is the Basa. It was a ship that was built in Sweden when Sweden was the big dog in Europe. It was to be the premier battleship- It was to be the premier battleship. They launched it, it went about a mile and sank in the harbor. They thought they were pretty good. At least the administration at that point did. We have a common human trait, thinking that we are pretty good. We hear that about Manya County and Sioux Falls and South Dakota, that we are pretty good because we are doing so many things that are positive, but that helps to breed a little complacency. We forget about the past, a little of the history. The federal building here was number two, if I remember correctly, on Timothy McVeigh's list of places that he thought he wanted to make a statement as a terrorist. We wouldn't have been prepared for that. Some of us remember the plane crash in Sioux City and we did help with that and a lot of our emergency response people went to Sioux City, but we also could have been number one in that position because the avionics, the things that went wrong, it only allowed the plane to turn in one direction. Had it turned in the other direction, the Sioux Falls Airport would have been ground zero as opposed to Sioux City. We have to be prepared. We can't be complacent and we have to pay attention to the past and be prepared. And with this thing that happened in Florida, we're a little complacent sometimes. We think we're pretty good, but we have to be prepared. We have more opportunities, I don't want to say opportunities, we have the potential of being somewhat in the ground zero, the center of the bullseye because Sioux Falls has grown bigger, we have larger public venues. We can't become complacent and we can't think we're pretty good. We have to keep working and being diligent. Now, some things we can't do anything about. They happen and are not in our control. Some things are in our control and recently there was a documentary that was played down at Cinema Falls by, and it was put together by two Augustana students about the homelessness in Sioux Falls. It was interesting, it was eye-opening, and if you had an opportunity to see that, I think it would be worth your effort. But that is something, when we think we're pretty good, we don't pay attention to the lower end of society many times, but this is something we can do something about. We have to be diligent, but we have to do our duty and pay attention to all segments of our society that we represent. And that would be the thing that I would emphasize this morning. If we don't look at the past and don't know where we've been, we will not know where we are going. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a public comment?
Good morning again, commissioners. Travis at eight fourteen west twentieth.
Again, I'll be holding up in your.
Again, we're holding our annual fireworks show. I would like to pass out this letter. One more time.
I beg you.
Thank you.
I would urge you. As well as all the business owners in Sioux Falls. To consider helping support this event. I'm not necessarily asking the county itself for money. One more time. If you could please help get the word out. Contact business friends. That would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. As long as we have a paid political announcement, I'd be happy to do that. The Sioux Falls J.C.'s are asking for an investment, total investment, to run the fireworks in Sioux Falls show at, for thirty thousand dollars. They're looking for a major investment or a major sponsor of twenty-five hundred dollars. Again, it's for obviously the Fourth of July celebration. If you want more information, you can look up their email or website address, but it's fireworksinsoufals.com or you can contact John Small or Travis Arnison at the Sioux Falls J.C.'s. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your involvement. Any other public comments? If not, we'll go to item ten, which is a public hearing to consider an application for a retail on-off sale malt beverage license from Hunter's Point Shooting Complex located at four five seven four three two hundred and sixtieth Street, Humboldt. Cindy?
Thank you. This location has been a licensed premises in the past?
Cindy? Can you?
Sorry. This establishment has been a licensed premises in the past. It's recently changed ownership, so that's why a new application was received for license under the new ownership. And it has been reviewed by the state's attorneys, planning and zoning, and the sheriff's department, and there were no objections or concerns reported, so we are requesting your approval of this application.
Any questions for Cindy?
I have a question, but I'll make a motion to approve.
A public hearing, so we have to ask for those, anyone in favor or opposed? No one's moving, so go ahead, Jeff.
Go ahead and move then. I'll make a motion to approve this request and I have a question for Cindy Johnson.
Okay. Is there a second? Thank you. Go ahead.
Cindy, do we have a limit to the number of beer and wine licenses that we're allowed to give out?
Not beer and wine, only alcohol.
Only full alcohol.
Right. Right, only liquor.
We have a motion and a second to approve the retail on-off sale malt beverage license for Hunter's Point Shooting Complex. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eleven, again, is a public hearing to consider an application for a retail on-off sale wine license from Crooks Gun Club located at twenty-eight oh eight west eighty-four street north in Sioux Falls.
Again, the auditor's office received this application. Crooks Gun Club currently has a malt beverage license and they want to add a wine license to that. They do quite a few wedding events out there and so they've submitted this application for a wine license. It has been reviewed also by the state's attorney, sheriff, and planning and zoning and there have been no objections to the issuance reported.
Thank you, Cindy. Again, is there any public comment, either for or against this? Good morning. We do need your name and address, please.
Okay, yes, thank you. I'm Rick Pitts. I'm the treasurer of the Crooks Conservation Gun Club. I live at fifty-seven twelve west Blue Sim Street here in Sioux Falls. Is that good?
Thank you.
Thank you. As Cindy mentioned, we operate the North Country Hall. We have a lot of weddings and receptions and we've had a number of requests to have wine served in addition to the beer and we're trying to meet the needs of our customers there and I urge your support for the request.
Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Does it appear like, is anyone opposed? With that, I entertain a motion.
I'd like to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the retail on-off sale wine license for the Crooks Gun Club. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Item twelve is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as lot four, block two, Corson, is it Fox Edition, one oh two dash forty-eight, Brandon Township, a public nuisance and enact South Dakota codified law twenty-one dash ten dash six. This was deferred from May third, 2016. Good morning, Kevin.
Good morning, Kevin Hookman, County Planning Department. As you just heard, this is an item that's been before you a couple of times now. The last time it was before you in May third, 2016. It was deferred for thirty days to allow the applicant more time as we considered the other types of nuisances that may have arose up behind the fence that was put up. And that would be things like open water containers, oil, places for pests and rodents. It was considerable for this. There it comes. And I have some pictures from the last couple of site visits. Staff visited the site on May, the last time, excuse me, on June second and then again on June ninth. I did visit the site again yesterday and I didn't see any changes from the particular place. This is from the June ninth site visit in the front yard and I place in the PowerPoint this time some side-by-side imagery so you can see the changes from the April twenty-sixth, was the last deadline for him to clean up the yard. That was when he first put up the fence and we had the discussion of whether or not this is abating the nuisance. But you can see that in the rear yard, there has been a few changes and one notable thing is that he has been maintaining his lawn. You can see that the weeds have been sprayed in the backyard here.
Kevin, it appears that there's more tires on the picture you took June second than there were, June ninth and there were on April twenty-sixth. Is that?
When I took a pretty close look at it, I guess I didn't see more tires per se. They may have shifted around a little bit from the previous times.
And they're breeders of mosquitoes.
Yeah, they can collect water in it and breed mosquitoes. This would be the front yard. All of that, there's more vehicles in the front yard than there were before, but they're all licensed yet. Side yard. And then this is kind of the larger picture of the main part of the backyard there. You can see that the recliner chair is missing in the newer picture. That got kind of dark with shadows from the June ninth photo, but there are some buckets there, five gallon pails with unknown materials in it, presumably waste oil because it looks like oil pails. And that. Staff notified, I suppose, let's see if we got more pictures. Oh, yeah. And then the rest of them from here on are more or less pictures that we have seen from previous meetings. Staff notified the petitioner and it does seem that he is here, so at that, I suppose we'll take any questions.
So you don't have any questions for Kevin? Okay, evidently not. This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to say anything or we would be happy to listen. If not, is there a motion?
What would the motion be? Could declare the property legally described as a public nuisance and enact, the last part of the original letter or the original memorandum? Is that the motion we're looking for?
All we need is a motion for a public nuisance, from my understanding.
I'll make that motion.
We don't need the legal address?
Uh, yeah, you can include the legal description.
Property legally described as lot four, block two, Foskies Edition, one oh two dash forty-eight, Brandon Township, a public nuisance and enact S D C L twenty-one dash ten dash six. That's my motion.
If I might, Dick, it's been suggested that we also refer to the, not only the legal description, but the South Dakota codified law number.
Okay.
Twenty-one ten six.
Twenty-one ten dash.
That was in the motion, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Do we have a second to declare this a nuisance, public nuisance under that codified law?
I'll second and then I have a comment.
Certainly. We have a motion and a second.
I just have to say that I'm just, I'm just disappointed that there wasn't apparently, the pictures make it look like there was not much effort at all made towards...
Can I say anything?
Just a minute, please.
Towards abating the nuisance as we discussed in our hearing a month ago and I was hopeful that we could not have to get to this step and that what it seemed to me to be relatively reasonable and doable actions haven't, haven't taken place, so.
Thank you. If you would like to say something, I'll give you a couple of minutes. You need to, sorry, but you need to come to the microphone, you need to identify yourself, give us your address.
My name is Lonnie Banghart and that's where I live. And the fence is put up and it's got posted all the way around the outside of the fence, private property. And according to the ordinance, if it's inside the fence, it's all right. There's an ordinance that says if it's in enclosed, fenced-in area, you can do what you want.
Any questions for him?
Mr. Chairman?
Is there?
Mr. Banghart, I, you know, we've asked you, we've kindly asked you, we've given you extra time and you continue to just pile crap in that property. I mean, do you understand why your neighbors and why we may not like the way that you're keeping this?
Do you understand why my neighbor complains because his garage is within a foot of my property and he's supposed to be three foot behind the property line and you guys allowed him to build that garage there?
So you didn't complain about that though, did you?
Yes, I did.
When?
When it was being built. You know, your person right there is related to my neighbor.
Interesting.
Yeah.
So what about our requests? I mean, we've had you in here how many times?
I have cleaned stuff up. I got rid of the chair. You complain about the buckets. I have ashes in the buckets and I have gravel in the buckets and there's chains in some of them and there's no waste oil or nothing in them.
That's good to know, but it still looks bad.
Looks bad. You can't see it from outside the fence.
I can see it from the frontier house.
You can see what? My cars that are licensed and stuff in the fence?
Looks junky. We're not building, we're not asking you to make it, you know, perfect, but it shouldn't look like, you know, a junk pile.
Commissioner Bender?
I was like, like I said, I would have liked to not be here personally, but I thought it was relatively clear and I thought you were agreeable the last time you appeared before us that you would remove the tires, the areas that could collect water and breed mosquitoes and attract rodents and it does not appear from the pictures that there was progress made in those areas.
Do you have water for your lawn service at home? You know, there's more mosquitoes in Sioux Falls than there is at my house, more in Brandon than my house. If you water your yard every day, you have more mosquitoes than what I have in them buckets.
At our last hearing, didn't you agree that you would remove those items? That's my recollection.
And some of the tires.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
Not of him, but I do have a comment after he sits down.
Okay. I believe we're done with the questions. Mr. Kelly?
I really believe, you know, part of our duty as the government or as a commission is, is to resolve issues that come up between people and, and we face it almost every week. There are about a dozen homes surrounding this property within about three hundred, four hundred feet. I guess we, and I, I don't know why these people aren't here except I have some, you know, some thoughts on why, but... you know, some thoughts on why, but you don't have a right to do anything inside the confines of your bo- of your, of your property. And we do have zoning rules and we do have re- uh, requirements that, uh, I, this, this has been back and forth, I don't know how many times we've faced this, a couple, three years, I mean, it's not just this last issue.
Many years.
Okay. So, um, I really believe that it, it's time to finally take some action and let the planning department do the job of the half of, of the nuisance. And we've given them every chance in the world, I think. And I don't agree with Gene, I do think we have to be here and we have to make these decisions. I don't like, I don't like to take away people's rights either, but I don't believe this is a right to, that, that is legal.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Scott, would you like to make some comment?
Uh, just for the record, I have no relation to anyone in that neighborhood. I'm not related at all to the neighbor, so I, I have no idea what Mr. Banghart is referring to.
Wanted to give us your name and address.
Scott Anderson, planning director.
Thanks. Any other comments?
Just a point of clarification, I don't know if I, I misspoke, but I didn't say that I don't think we should be here, I just said I preferred that we not be here, that he would have taken care of the issue and, and that the neighbors would be able to get along. I do agree with Commissioner Kelly that this is our job, um, to make these kinds of decisions.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to declare this a public nuisance. I think we need a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Uh, Kelly?
Aye.
Benega?
Yes, uh, motion unanimously, uh, passes. This has been declared a public nuisance, uh, planning and zoning and the other individuals need to pursue that. Thank you, Kevin. Do you have a comment?
Uh, no comment, just thank you.
Okay. Uh, we'll go to, I'm sorry, we deferred item thirteen for two weeks to the twenty-eighth, so we're on item fourteen, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, item fourteen, which is to consider a motion to amend the February ninth, two thousand and sixteen authorization of the purchase of two one-ton Chevy Silverado thirty-five-hundred pickups, total cost of sixty-five thousand, four hundred and sixteen dollars from Jerry's Automotive from contract one six eight six six dash eight A competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. DJ.
Good morning, Commissioners, DJ Booth, the Highway Superintendent. Uh, we had previously received authorization to purchase three vehicles, uh, through the South Dakota State bid process and, uh, the state of South Dakota ended up canceling their contract, I think maybe is probably a non-professional term, but, uh, going away with their contract, uh, with Billion, uh, after trying, attempting to make an order for several vehicles. And then they ended up redoing the contract with the second lowest bidder, uh, who, uh, is listed in the briefing memo here. Uh, the reason for them, uh, canceling that original contract was because I think Billion had, uh, made an error, some sort of an error in their bid and they were losing money on the trucks, uh, for each sale. And I think the state was looking at purchasing, uh, a lot of trucks and so that, uh, Billion was going to lose a couple hundred thousand dollars on that, um, that transaction. And so, uh, they did, uh, provide the, the Chevy Traverse that we purchased off the state bid and they put the other two vehicles in a holding lot. Uh, now that the state has the contracting figured out with the, uh, with the other vendor, uh, those two vehicles have been moved over to that other vendor's inventory and we're ready to move forward with a request for a purchase, uh, off of the, the new state bid, if you want to call it that, uh, that they've, uh, executed. I'm looking for the vendor's name and I'm not seeing it here in the briefing memo.
Jerry's.
Jerry's Automotive, okay, sorry about that. So looking for, uh, your approval with, uh, Jerry's Automotive to purchase off the state bid for those two vehicles.
I believe, uh, Kirsten has some comment about the contract.
Well, maybe if I could just ask DJ something, clarification.
Certainly.
Uh, DJ, the timing of, of your, putting your bid in was, was it apparent from the state that, uh, the Billion bid was not being honored anymore at that point, or were they still listed as the responsible bidder?
They were still listed as a responsible bid- bidder and it's our understanding that Billion made, or, uh, the state of South Dakota made an order sometime in between when we made the request, uh, to our county commission and, uh, and before we'd received, would have received delivery of that vehicle and, or those two vehicles. It could be that the order was made and they didn't know about the, the problems. We, we don't actually contact the state of South Dakota when we make an order, that's not something that we're obligated to do, we only contact the vendor. And at that time, the vendor was willing to pr- to sell to us off of the, um, off of the contract. And it was, it was...
Billion is the vendor?
Billion, it was the vendor at the time.
Said they were willing.
Said they were willing. After they, uh, several weeks after we made the order, then they contacted us. Now, we contacted them trying to get an update on the, on the, uh, the purchase and, uh, they contacted, or they told us that they weren't going to be able to provide them at this time because they were working on some contract issues with the state. We contacted the state and we found out what the issues were and that the state was, uh, going to be entering into contr- uh, contract with Jerry's.
All right, thank you, makes sense?
Yes.
Any questions for DJ? Commissioner Barth?
It's not necessarily a question, but this seems awfully similar to the situation we have with our planning department. Uh, you know, where, uh, you know, which we deferred for two weeks and perhaps we should defer action on this until, uh, till we look into it a little bit further, I guess. I might ask the state's attorney and I guess also I would comment that whenever I buy a vehicle new from a dealer, I'm hoping they're losing money on it.
I'll just comment a little bit on the, my idea for, my reasoning for deferring, um, I, I do agree that they seem somewhat similar, but the, the facts and the timeline were not as clear and I wasn't able to gather the information about the timeline, um, for the item in number thirteen. Uh, here, it had been fleshed out a little bit more timeline and how the state had been involved in, in cancel the contract and, and that was the reason that I didn't defer item fourteen. I'd be, I'd be open for doing that.
Mr. Chairman, I guess I would ask the state's attorney if he thinks that there's any grounds for us to defer action or if he's comfortable that this would be the right decision today.
That would probably be something I'd prefer to look into to get you a more definite answer.
I'd make a motion at that point then to defer for two weeks.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Question?
DJ, yeah.
Maybe I can just make one comment. We, we included an email from the state of South Dakota. Scott Nelson is the, uh, the Office of Procurement Management Manager that, that oversees and administers the state's vehicle purchase contracting. And we received an email from him on June sixth, uh, stating that Billion Auto had made a mistake in the bids, uh, for the Chevy vehicles. Normally, a vendor would bring this to our attention immediately. Billion Auto notified us of the mistake in late April and started that, or stated that due to the error, they would be unable to deliver the vehicles at the bid price awarded. Those, or through several discussions with legal counsel, it was determined that the most important thing was to get the vehicles in question delivered as soon as possible. Therefore, a decision was made to release Billion from the Chevy contracts and re-award them to the next lowest bidder. In the case of line item twenty-five, which is these vehicles, uh, this was re- awarded to Jerry's Automotive. And so I don't know if that provides any additional clarification. Um, it, you can see that it wasn't something that Minnehaha County did. We moved forward with a contract that, uh, was valid at the time and we've been notified, uh, later by the state that, uh, the contract was released and that they have a contract with a new vendor and that's what, that's what we're wishing to purchase off of at this time.
DJ, is there a time crunch where two weeks is going to really put you in a bind? If we just take a little time to look at these two issues together globally?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, I believe, to defer this action for two weeks to the twenty-eighth. Any other questions? If not, those in favor of deferring it, say aye.
Aye.
What was opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, DJ. Uh, item fifteen, briefing on the Highway Department draft access management policy.
Commissioners, uh, access management is defined by FHWA as the proactive management of vehicle access points to land parcels adjacent to roadways. Uh, good access management promotes safe and efficient use of the transportation network. As, access management benefits include improved movement of through traffic, reduction of crashes and fewer vehicle conflicts. A, a vehicle conflict exists when, uh, two vehicles are attempting to make the same maneuver or when, uh, there's one that is opposing one of the maneuvers of, of the other vehicle. A good example of access management would be the installation of a turn lane at a new grain elevator in order to remove, uh, the turning trucks from the through lane. Opponents of access management are typically local businesses that depend on pass-by traffic and they fear potential reductions in revenue. A good example of this, uh, type of resistance would be like a gas station owner that would be upset with the installation of a, uh, of a median. That would be installed typically at, around the intersections in front of a gas station or another type of property that is, uh, usually on the corner. You see a lot of this in the urban environments. Minnehaha County Highway Department has drafted a draft access management plan or policy and today we're simply putting that information in front of the county commission and, uh, illustrating our intent to utilize this as a working document until proposing it in its final form sometime in two thousand and seventeen. Uh, the policy generally reflects our standards of practice over the last three years. However, it's, it's beneficial to put these documents and standards in, in writing in order to, um, educate the public and have them have a better understanding of what our policy is and also allows us to apply our standards uniformly. The Highway Department is coordinated with all agencies that we share joint jurisdiction with in the county. Uh, that would include the Department of Transportation, City of Sioux Falls, City of Brandon, City of Del Rapids and the City of Hartford. Uh, we've included them in our, our conversations and meetings, uh, when we've drafted this policy. Uh, a few of them have similar policies. Uh, some of them are geared more toward rural environments and then some of them towards urban environment. So, um, our policy isn't identical to any one of theirs, but it's, it has some similarities and use same, same type of practices. Uh, this policy will be enforced through the use of our updated application for highway access permit. The updated permit application includes language referring to the standards and also signature blocks for the joint jurisdiction agencies. A copy of the draft policy is included in your briefing memo. Uh, it typically, or it generally has, uh, a requirement for a permit application when, when somebody is gr- uh, requesting access to the right of way. And it also has, uh, language in there for possibly requiring, uh, traffic impact study if it's a sizable development. Uh, then we require a third party to look at the access and look at, uh, the development that is occurring and trying to find out if there's anything that should be done as far as improvements, uh, for example, a turn lane or some sort of a median, uh, near the property. And also, uh, the policy establishes access control, which is generally the number of access points in a mile or, uh, the location of allowable access points. So that's just a brief update of, uh, where we're at with our access management policy and I'll entertain any questions that, uh, you all may have. We're not asking for any approval at this time, but wanted to keep the commission informed of, of what our intentions are.
Commissioner Barth?
So DJ, we have a policy now and this is an update to that policy?
We don't formally have a, a policy now and there's nothing adopted. Uh, we've been using, uh, generally accepted standards, uh, over the last three years or so, three or four years, and we've put those now in writing and, and created a draft policy.
Being on planning and zoning, I know that when a project comes to us, we often talk about installing a turning lane, say, at the grain handling facility in Lyons, for example. Um, so would, would your policy then supersede the planning and zoning, uh, for that kind of a thing?
No, no, they're supposed to work in union with, with a planning and zoning effort. And so, um, the transportation-related issues rig- surrounding development and, and long-range planning and that type of thing, uh, we receive a lot of access permit applications and in order for us to not grant access to anybody and everybody along the highway, we would like to have a document like this that says when and where we should allow access points. And then planning can also use a document like this when they're looking at proposed developments, uh, but they do have their own zoning ordinances that, that can control some of that, too.
Commissioner Kelly?
Um, so this is kind of putting into writing what you've been trying to, to accomplish all along.
Yes.
Is there a, uh, are you, is it you don't grant the access or do you, do you look, I mean, I, I can imagine the sight lines are probably one of the big issues. Um, and yet you don't have the ability to set the speed, well, you do on the county highway. Now, is this applied to townships or just county, just the...
This is just our jurisdiction on roadways.
Our jurisdiction, okay.
Mr. Bender?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with it.
DJ, you indicated in your memo that, um, the South Dakota Department of Transportation is currently revising their access management plan and that those changes may influence the plan that, proposed plan. Can you just give, I mean, some examples? Is it just a matter of trying to coordinate and collaborate that might affect our plan?
That's exactly it, coordinate and collaborate. Their, uh, their access management was developed a long time ago. Access management is a relatively new thing to transportation engineering and in South Dakota, the state of South Dakota was actually kind of on the forefront of that, uh, that, I don't know, fifteen years ago or so, ten years ago. And so, uh, they have an older policy and, and there's been, been a lot of things, uh, learned through lessons, uh, just issues that have come up over the last several years. And they're just going through kind of a, a normal process of revisiting their policies and access management is one of the next ones that they want to look at. And so we are foreseeing and they've indicated to us that there's going to be some changes. We don't know yet what those are and they don't really know what the, what they're going to be yet, uh, just because they haven't really started the process yet. But as they go through that process and update some of their, uh, some of their policy, we might see some of their positive changes and want to implement them in, in our policy as well.
And do you anticipate that that would be, that the state will be done sometime in the next year while you're still operating under this?
I'm not familiar with the timeline, so Shannon will answer that.
Good morning, Commissioners, Shannon Schills, Assistant Highway Superintendent. Uh, they're, they're pretty well through the process. It hasn't been approved by their commission and they're going through legal review and some other things. And so, uh, Brooke White is the state, uh, access management engineer for the DOT and she's indicated to me that, uh, the changes will potentially be significant. She was kind of, um, reluctant to say anymore. Uh, timing-wise, uh, I would say you probably start hearing stuff late in the year for it to go into effect sometime in seventeen.
Okay, thank you.
Any other, excuse me, questions for DJ or Shannon? Obviously, this is a briefing, so no action is taken. I guess we'll look forward to updates and obviously want to hear from the surrounding communities and from the, uh, state DOT at some point.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item sixteen is to authorize the chair to sign an agreement for Indian Child Welfare Act qualified expert witness between Minnehaha County and Luke Yellowrobe. Kirsten?
All right, thank you, uh, Commissioner Benega. Um, before you, uh, is a request for authorization for the state's attorney as representative of Minnehaha County to sign, uh, two contracts on behalf of Minnehaha County. Um, during abuse and neglect cases that are handled by the state's attorney's office, often, uh, we need to rely on, uh, Indian Child Welfare Act experts to, uh, testify in these cases to assure compliance with federal law and, uh, state law for that matter on the placement of, of children with, uh, Native American heritage. Uh, and, uh, to, to facilitate this, the, uh, State Department of Social Services, uh, grants, uh, money to, uh, the state's attorney's office on an annual basis to help fund, uh, the retention of these necessary equa, uh, expert services. Um, those contracts, uh, expire at the end of May and, and start at the beginning of June. Uh, this year, DSS has granted again, uh, a lump sum amount to, uh, Minnehaha County for the state's attorney's office to use for this purpose for, uh, expert testimony. Uh, Mr. Yellowrobe has, uh, provided this in the past and is amenable to doing this, uh, for another year term. Uh, there's a slight increase in the contract amount that's authorized by, uh, the Department of Social Services. And then the state's attorney's office reaches a contract with a particular expert, in this case, Mr. Yellowrobe, uh, to pass along those funds that are provided by, uh, DSS. So it's, uh, expense and revenue neutral to the county. Um, the fund, it, the funds exactly match in the two, uh, contracts. Um, the state's attorney is designated as the official that handles this on, on behalf of the county. of the county. However, since it, it deals with contracting authority and monetary action, that's why I bring this to you today for a commission approval for the state's attorney's office, basically to sign off on these two agreements. I've provided copies of the two agreements for you to look over and stand by for any questions.
So you want to have any questions for Kirsten? Commissioner Bender?
Kirsten, does this cover 100% of any equa expert or do we sometimes need to hire an additional expert for other reasons?
In, in years past, I don't recall ever having to retain anyone else for these services. Mr. Yellowrobe is an expert in this area and has a broad range of knowledge about the, the necessary subject matter that he covers. I should point out too that your question about additional expenses too, just to be clear to the commission, that this lump sum also includes travel, lodging. I mean, there's nothing additional that the county has to pay. It's just a flat, flat amount for the entire year, whatever is necessary to provide that expert service, testimony, file review, all those things is built into the contract as well. So.
Any other questions? If not, I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second to approve the contract with Luke Yellowrobe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Item 17 is to authorize the chair to sign a professional service agreement, the amount of $45,000 with JLG Architects for architectural design and construction services for bathroom facilities at the WH Lyons Fairgrounds. Robert Wilson?
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson, again in the commission office. We brought this item to you in the building committee back on May 31st and at that point we were bringing it as a professional services agreement for design and then oversight of the remodeling of the bathrooms under the grandstand as well as the design and, and construction oversight of a comfort station bathroom at the north end of the midway. During those discussions, there were, there were some concerns, questions raised about the, the frequency of architect contact and follow-up during the construction phase. We've relayed those concerns back to Scott Wick at the, at the fairgrounds who has been in, in direct contact with this, contact with, with this provider. And I would just say that the current language that we have for your consideration, I'll just read one, one sentence. Under the construction phase services, "The architect shall provide bi-weekly site observation visits for construction duration." And had provided this contract, latest version of the contract to Lloyd Olson, the Facilities Department for review. And then I also just went back and, and also checked with Scott Wick again out at the fairgrounds just to, on that, on that base amount that has been consistent all the way through, that $45,000. And wanted to, to point out that that is on the, the total project cost over, over two years here of $550,000, that is 8.2% of, of the total cost under what, what I understand to be somewhat of a benchmark for architectural fees within a overall construction project. So that's for your consideration. Stand by for any questions that you may have.
Questions for Robert? Commissioner Kelly?
Remind me, was the city going to participate in this thing at all or was there something from them they were going to give towards this project?
No. This, this relates back to the, the discussion you've had several times at the building committee level where they were looking to reprioritize a, a number of different allocations that they were expecting, both that they had received last year, didn't, didn't use as well as money for, slated for 2016. What you may be referring to is one of the, the items both in 2015 and 2016 is they had a separate line item for, for asphalt. And in the past, they have received a, a in-kind donation from one of the, the local vendors who's a, a great partner with the, the fair association that that has essentially been provided in kind, what they expected and budgeted to, to have to pay for. So that was an expense that they did not have, did not incur and, and some additional funds that they were able to roll over into this project.
Any other questions for Robert?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Mark or Lloyd, do you have any comments? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with JLG Architects. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item 18 is county liaison reports. Anybody have a report?
No, sir. New business? Does anyone have any new business? Old business? Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question and I don't mean to fault anybody on this thing, but so often we end up deferring things and it's because obviously we want more information. For instance, on the truck deal today and stuff. And I'm just wondering why are we not, when initially are we getting too much of this information just at this meeting or just the week before and not, not receiving what the in-depth that we need? I, I just get concerned, and I expressed it before, about, about the deferrals and I'm as guilty as anybody else on deferring things, but, but I, I, I do believe we're getting a little bit of a rep of, you know, waiting, waiting a couple of weeks or waiting a month and, and I, I wish we could do something in the process so that we could make the decisions the day it comes to us. It's, it's more of a question or frustration than anything else, but.
Any comments?
Well, I mean, I would agree that there is a, you know, it's a function of the current process that we don't get, you know, items don't get uploaded into Dropbox for commissioners until late in the day or, you know, second half of Friday at least. And so by the time we have an opportunity to look at them, you know, if we are really on top of things, we look at them over the weekend. That gives us one day and staff one day to try to gather information and people are gone and, you know, I mean, a lot of times that's difficult. And so I think that, yeah, ideally it'd be better if we could vet things a little bit earlier, but I think it's an opportunity, particularly when we have items that are not completely time-sensitive to take, to, at least we've been alerted to the issue. So we have an opportunity to defer them a little bit to get the information that we need. I know we did try to gather information yesterday about the item that was deferred and, and because of, you know, reasons probably beyond the control of the people that were tasked with gathering the information, there just wasn't time. And so, you know, I certainly would like opportunities, but I know the commission staff also works hard and to try to get things out, but to the extent we can get, you know, a lead calendar or something that gives us some additional time to gather information, I would, I would be supportive of that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think obviously what happens is we need to have a conversation on these things and when there's five commissioners, which if more than two of us gather, we have to have 48 hours' notice, having a conversation is difficult to do when you just get the info on, say, Friday and have to make a decision on, on Tuesday. Each of us as individuals may have different questions and whatever info we get back may lead to other, other questions. And I think it's just the nature of our process as a, you know, with open meetings, et cetera, that we need to sometimes extend our, our discussion on these things.
Gerald, you're very familiar as I am with the informational that the city council does, but it really does give you a week or two heads up on what's, what's occurring. Actually, I mean, I think they bring up in the informational, not necessarily what's going to happen in the, the meeting that night, but what's going to happen in the next meeting or the next meeting. And it does give someone who has a concern about an issue more time to talk because it is, it's impossible. You get a Friday afternoon, you probably don't even look at it till Saturday. Then you got one day Monday, and if Monday's a holiday, of course, that totally messes it up, but you got the one day just to, to research it. And what happens is we end up coming, a lot of our planning and zoning, a lot of our drainage issues, all these people show up and then we end up carrying it over for a couple of weeks. And perhaps if we thought or worked about some process like the informational meeting, which is a public meeting on the city council's part, that it might stem some of the, it might give us a little opportunity to look at these issues a little closer.
Other comments? I think Dick's right. There's some of us that don't look at the Tuesday agenda until Sunday night, frankly. And by that time we, it's too late to do any posting of a new item or whatever for the meeting. The only way we could make that work better would be to get the information sooner in the previous week, but that's almost impossible sometimes.
Why?
Well, I think it, yeah.
Everybody grumbles, but it can be done.
I think if we had, as you suggested, an informational meeting, that could be discussed in some, maybe not in any significant amount, but at least ask some questions before it hits the agenda two weeks later, we could talk about that, but I think there's some timing issues. I think we should talk about that at some point. I don't think we'll make a decision tonight or whatever today is. Is there any other old business? If not, we do need to go into exec session for litigation, personnel and contract.
That's my motion, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second? A motion and a second for executive session for litigation, personnel and contract. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We'll take about a five-minute break so Tony can get done and we can sign some paperwork.